Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you all for being here tonight. Before our meeting officially begins, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Poole and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you for the things that you've done for our city, continue to guide us on the path we're going to, to make this a better city for our community. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Praise the allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the roll tapes?
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Watt?
I want you to know that Mr. Poole, he had, I think, 10 seconds notice that he was doing the invocation, so good thinking. Thank you. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of April 8th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of the April 18th minute, or 8th minutes and dispense with the formal agreement. Sorry.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We have several pieces of legislation which staff has recommended for our consideration tonight. Anyone present wishing to address any of those, ask any questions they have and make any comments, are welcome to do so. Now, we're starting the microphone. We're going to ask your name and address. It's a fairly boring agenda tonight, so I don't see anyone rushing there. We like boring agendas once in a while. They're okay as a break. So, we...
That's the first time that ever happened to Mr. Murray.
Okay. Well, now, you know, it's Commissioner Poole, for sure. So, we, as some of you know, we have begun a new tradition, swearing in the safety forces of our city as they come on board. And Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you, that you're running the show, are you not, sir?
Look, I carry the stuff for Eric, so he can...
Oh, I see. Okay.
I'm just a caddy, that's all.
Well, welcome to all the members of the Fire Department who are here. I thank you for what you do every day. It's great that you turn out to be with one of your new guys or gals as they come into office and take the oath. And it's a delight to see you all here.
Thank you very much, Chief. I thank you, Commissioner President Murray. One of the swearing-in new lieutenants tonight, Kevin McGraw, which is a special honor for me because I've known Kevin for a long time. I was a, I wrestled with his older brother, Chris, off and on for years, and knew his other older brother, Eric, who is here tonight, so that's special. And Kevin, from a very young age, was a fearless young boy, and so it doesn't surprise me at all. He would come up to the older wrestlers at wrestling tournaments, and you saw that he had a lot of energy and a lot of spark that he had from a very young age, and so it doesn't surprise me at all that he went into a profession where it requires you to be fearless every day, and that he's risen within the ranks of that, under the leadership of Chief Phil Paxton, and working hand in hand with everybody here today, so we're proud to swear him in this evening. Kevin, I'm going to give you a copy of this, and then I'm going to read it. I'm going to read it into, so... Okay, so if you could stand and raise your right hand next to Chief Phil Paxton, I'll stop, and so just read up to where I stop, and we'll do it like three different lines, and then when we're done, we'll sign it, and we'll be official. So, congratulations, everybody, for being here tonight, because it's really exciting. I, Kevin McGraw, recognizing my fundamental duty as lieutenant of the Sandusky City Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against a threat of fire and disaster.
I, Kevin McGraw, recognizing my fundamental duty as lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust, to be honored for as long as I remain a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust, to be honored for as long as I remain a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As part of the tradition of the United States Commission, we would now have the pinning of the badge onto his jacket. And this is very, this is a very big honor because you got to pick somebody to do it. So, it's usually someone that's really, really important and with you along the way for the ride.
For the sacrifices of my staff and my wife.
I just want to kind of announce before we, you know, end this ceremony tonight, Mario has admitted that this young man has reached the heights that he's reached. Just want to kind of commend Mario and his ship for development such a fine young man, his parents, and his wife, and his children as well. So, congratulations, and...
And I want to apologize, Lieutenant. I thought, I was reading what was here, and I was looking at it, and going, "He looks familiar." And so, he doesn't look like a newbie. I mean, he'd all look like Brady here. But I, so I didn't realize we were doing it for promotion, and congratulations to Kim.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All of you are here to enjoy, to celebrate this special occasion. I want to let you all
know that you're welcome to stay for the balance of our meeting. Some people find it interesting, most don't. You probably don't want to spoil your celebration with the rest of our meeting, but again, you're always welcome. It may not be entertaining, but at least it will be a little bit educating, and that you're welcome to go.
See ya.
Get out of jail free.
Yeah.
Get out of jail free.
Yep, absolutely.
Always lose the crop.
See you.
Congratulations.
Yep.
We have next, the proclamation that Mr. Waddington will offer in honor of Arbor Day.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, including in Sandusky, where 2019 marks the 29th anniversary as a Tree City USA, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, abate issues with stormwater runoff, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and protect the health of our city and Lake Erie. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products while increasing property values, enhancing the economic vitality of business areas, and beautifying our community. And whereas the city continues to maintain its urban forest by planting new trees which are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now, therefore, I'm not Dennis, but Dave Waddington, the City Commissioner, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 27, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Sandusky, and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this 22nd day, April 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington. And you're glad you're not me, and I'm glad I'm not you.
That didn't go off well.
Moving on, we have a fiscal 2019 CDVG one-year action plan and a 2012-2023 consolidated plan hearing. And I see Earl Blanca is here to assist us with that hearing. Ms. Blanca, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to apologize in advance. I'm sick, so I might have to take a few breaks. But, so, thank you, Mr. President, and members of commission. This will be the second public hearing concerning the city's fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant 2019 through 2023 Consolidated Plan, 2019 One-Year Action Plan, and update to the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. The city is currently under contract with Waitram Associates, Inc. of Detroit, Michigan, to act as the city's consultant for the coordination, administration, development, and implementation of these plans. The proposed program year 2019 Consolidated Plan goals and action plan activities have been selected through a public process involving public hearings and meetings. The city has proposed the following five goals for the 2019-2023 Consolidated Plan. The first goal is housing, and this is to improve the quality and accessibility of affordable housing. The second is to reduce homelessness, which is prevent and reduce homelessness through programs. The third is neighborhood stabilization, enhance the life for people living in low and moderate income neighborhoods through public investment in facilities, improvements, and services, as well as blight removal. The fourth is special needs assistance. This is to promote access to public services for special needs populations generally assumed to be low and moderate income. And the fifth is administration During the planning process, Sandusky anticipated an allocation of approximately $650,000 for the program year 2019 Action Plan. The proposed activities in the draft plan include the following: Program Administration, $121,000; Fair Housing, $9,000; Public Facilities, $315,000; Clearance and Demolition for Residential Structures, $155,000; The Erie County Health Department's 211 Program, $5,000; The Erie County Senior Center Meals on Wheels Program was $30,000; and then the OGO Mobile Food Pantry and Market was $15,000. The draft 2019 through 2023 Consolidated Plan, which includes the 2019 One-Year Action Plan and the draft analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, are both currently available for review and comment on the City of Sandusky website and at the Sandusky's local library. The comment period for these plans will run from April 19th through May 19th. Comments can be submitted directly to me at a-blank-a@ci.sandusky.oh.us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments regarding the CDVG plans that have been presented?
Just from Mr. Chairman, where is this located on the website? Describe how to get there.
I believe it's under Community Development, correctly?
Yes.
Yes. If you go under, for residents, and go under Community Development, it should be located right under there, under the plans.
Any other questions, Commissioners? This is a public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak to the proposed CDVG plan, please stuff your microphone, give your name and address, share with us any thoughts that you may have. If not, then I will declare the hearing closed, and thank you for being here and get well. Commissioners, you have before you a number of pieces of legislation, I mean, communication staff recommended, legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
Someone.
Second.
A motion and second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. First, Commissioners, we have a number of items for on our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like moved to our regular agenda? Not that, Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda items, please?
President, item A is an ordinance correcting of Schreiner's error for the West Market Street legislation. Item B is a concession agreement with Ma, Pa, and Dewey for a Dorn Community Park. Item C is an amendment to the Enterprise Zone Agreement with Ohio Truck Sales LLC. It's name change only for that item. And item D is authorization to dispose of city property.
Commissioners, having heard the items on the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring all ordinances A through D as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in accordance with A through D, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Those ordinances are adopted. Item number one, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item number one was ordered in. It is a resolution supporting the proposed Fix It America constitutional amendment and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. I'll speak to this briefly, and earlier today, one of the reporters, Andy Oral, here in the back of the room, asked me why I supported this. And this is something that I have consistently supported for the 15 years that I have been privileged to be part of a public service. There are, there is nothing more corrupting in politics today than simple money, dark money, some tricks of law. We can't effect that change here, but we can express our voice on behalf of our community that this change needs to be made, so that when there is public speech, we know who is paying for that public speech and why it is they're saying it, what they financially stand to gain. Right now, that isn't the case. After the Citizens United decision, these expenditures are allowed to remain anonymous, and they often work against the greater public good. And I think that we need to know who is speaking. And I don't see this as a partisan issue. I know there are many, I happen to be a Democrat, but there are many Republicans who support this as just good government reform. And it's very much like the process that we just went through with the redistricting reform. You know, the state went through that. It was supported on a bipartisan basis. That perhaps is the second most corrupting thing of politics these days, is the way we draw districts, and that was done on a bipartisan basis. So, I'm proud to be able to vote in favor of this and hope that my colleagues will as well. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Totally agree.
Anyone else? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on a motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number two, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Steerhoff Moving Division of Superior Mobility Services LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, for moving services to relocate administrative staff to the new City Hall administrative facility, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Hamilton, I'm going to have you negotiate for us the next time we move offices within our building. That's a great price, and Steerhoff did it for us as well. They are a local company and they do a very fine job. And I'm glad that they were the winning bid, but perhaps you have something to add, please.
Through you, Commissioner President. We released an RSP for moving services to move staff to new City Hall. This will entail all their workstations, our furniture, everything we're taking with us. They will provide us with the packing materials. They will come back. They will box us up and move us down there. We ended up getting four responses: Berger Transfer for $37,000, Commercial Works for $29,975, Moving Solutions for $29,570, and our local favorite, Steerhoff, for $12,200. They're a local company. The price was great. They can fulfill the work, so it was actually a no-brainer, a win-win situation on this one.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Commissioners, questions or comments? If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with tree experts of Huron, Ohio, for the 2019 tree removal project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, poll the Commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And turn now to Mr. Whoopser for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Commissioner President, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with donations. A donation of $10,000 was received from the Dorn Foundation to help cover the cost of hiring a seasonal position for the downtown's maintenance and beautification. This was something that they funded through the Main Street Association while it existed, but because that, they no longer have staff at the Main Street Association, they asked if they could fund that through us this year, and it should help with the beautification. And so, we'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Motion and second.
Second.
Discussion. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. With a great thanks to the Dorn Foundation for their continued support.
Thank you. Moving on to administration. One of the members of the Public Arts and Culture Commission, Ethan Unzicker, had to resign due to personal family commitments. While members are appointed by both the city manager and the city commissioners, this particular seat was filled by the city manager. After reviewing the applications and file of those interested in serving on this commission, Gail Reedy will be appointed for a term ending December 31st, 2020, to replace Mr. Unzicker. Ms. Reedy is a retired librarian at the Sandusky Library, has a lifelong interest in the study of art, and will be a welcome addition to the Public Arts and Culture Commission. Do we need to have a motion for that, or no? Okay, so we don't need a motion. I just wanted to notify the commission. I apologize. Moving on to the police department. The testing process for new hire candidates for full-time positions will begin through the National Testing Network on May 1st through June 14th. Candidates contain information from the testing, from Administrative Services and the city website and the National Testing Network website, www.nationaltestingnetwork.com. For questions, contact Victoria Schaefer of Administrative Services and HR at 419-627-5885. That's Victoria Schaefer at 419-627-5885. Also, the Axon body worn cameras were first deployed on April 17th, 2019, and Chief Orzak said that it was already going well, and they could see the benefits of the improvements in the technology with the new systems. For public works, shoreline restoration work at Lyons Park on the worst section of the erosion will begin this week. Upon completion, staff will develop a plan to complete the project. And a few seasonal updates, water crews have commenced flushing fire hydrants. Periodic flushing of water mains is required to ensure high-quality water. Weekly flushing locations are available via the city's websites. For website for questions, contact the water plan at 419-627-5805. Again, that's 419-627-5805. Also, the summer schedule for refuse recycling collection at city-owned properties, installation of portable restrooms, has begun. To report maintenance issues at city properties, please call 419-627-5884. Again, that's 419-627-5884. Street crews will implement summer traffic patterns on the Myland Road overpass at the Butler Street Ramp on Monday, May 6. And residents are invited to dispose of unwanted items at the drive-through drop-off day this Saturday, April 27th, as well as yard waste at Barnes Nursery on Saturday, May 4th, and Sunday, May 5th. For further details, please contact 419-627-5884. Again, that's 419-627-5884. Also, we wanted to provide an update. Commissioner Waddington has once again worked to provide some cleanup days to help beautify the city. The first of those will take place on May 4th at Lyons Park at 9:00 a.m. There will also be a cleanup on May 18th at Big Island or Pipe Creek, also at 9:00 a.m., and on May 25th of the MacArthur Park and Churchill Park area in the south side of the city. So, I thank you, Commissioner Waddington, and those who are involved. And more details can follow on those. Moving on to community development. The Lead Hazard Control Grant, the Erie County Health Department is once again preparing to submit a multi-year grant application to HUD for the Lead Hazard Control Program. This three-year grant request is seeking three and a half million in letter remediation and emergency repair funding, the overwhelming majority of which is likely to be expended within the city limits. The city has been asked to provide a letter of support in efforts to secure funding. As opposed to stating an exact dollar amount, the city is merely being asked to state that all applicants are eligible to apply for additional funding through the city's housing, development, and beautification programs for the duration of the grant period, conditioned on funding availability. This is customary with past practices since the inception of the Housing, Development, and Beautification Program, which has provided support to multiple properties completing letter remediation projects through the Erie County Health Department. Of the 48 letter remediation projects completed in Sandusky in the recent grant rounds, 14 of those utilized HDB dollars as local match, and the staff is seeking commission approval to provide said support letter. I'd ask for a motion to provide that letter.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and second discussion. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Moving on to the planning department. Once again, we're excited to let the public know they can make nominations for Pride Award winners. They're currently being accepted by Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator Talon Floor. Nominations can be completed at cityofsandusky.com/prideawards. The nominating period closes Friday, May 10th. Also, enforcement of the parking time restrictions will begin Monday, May 6. Notification signs will begin to be posted, actually, as of today, and will continue to be posted downtown. That concludes my remarks for this evening. If you happen to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I walked along the waterway, you know, we had a discussion earlier this weekend. I walked along the waterway, and I do agree with Mr. Schwager about, I know we had four or five cans out. I believe it's one or two on the West, or the Washington Street Pier. Maybe we get one or two out there. And then, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, also have some additional signage. It doesn't have to be real big, but do not litter in our waterways, you know, it can help, because there's a lot of plastic right now. If you go down by the Shelby Street Bolt Ramp, I walked along there, there's a ton of plastic that's getting into the water, and 40% of the plastic used in the world is single-use. So, I'm trying to rid myself of using water bottles, trying to get out of them. But I think we need to look at that, you know, we got this money, the million dollars for Sandusky Bay, you know, along the Sandusky Bay, but also Lake Erie, and plastics is big, and just to litter that, you know, dump in the lake, it ends up out there eventually. I just wish we could have little better reminders, like our pathways going up, like on the Washington Street Pier, possibly the Jack Street Pier, like little reminders, maybe small signage, if we could do something on that.
I hope we could do that.
Look into that for sure. Check back there.
A few more cans can make a big difference, instead of throwing it in the water.
So, I, Mr. Whoopser, I just want to piggy... So, I, Mr. Woopsir, I just want to piggyback off of the conversation regarding the lead hazard control grant, and maybe just a public service announcement to the, to the parents at home, maybe to the grandparents at home. You know, one of the single biggest health threats, public health risks that we face in older communities is lead paint in homes that were constructed before nineteen seventy-eight. These poor kids that are brought up in that home, those homes usually maintained by landlords who either don't care or they're not, they don't, they're not aware, and I prefer to believe that most of them are unaware, these poor kids end up with both hands tied behind their back before they ever have a chance to figure things out for themselves. We do have lead poisoning that occurs in our community, and it's because these homes are not properly maintained. Just a simple coat of paint makes all the difference in the world. If you have children, particularly those under the age of five, if they're gnawing at window sills or they're on the floor, as kids are, especially wooden floors, they're picking up this lead in the paint dust, and it's just very small amounts, just the tiniest amounts, you couldn't even see, they make an enormous difference in the outcome of these children in terms of their learning abilities, in terms of their earning potential, in terms of their long-term health. And so, if you are a tenant or you're a homeowner, do look for signs of peeling paint or floors that are worn past the paint to the wood, particularly the window sills. The solutions are relatively inexpensive, but the difference in the outcome of these kids' lives is enormous. My wife and I talk about it because the school then sees these kids after five years, sometimes of exposure to lead, and then they're so much more difficult to educate, not for their own, not because of their faults, just because of what they've been exposed to. So, again, I urge parents and grandparents might be in a position to better observe these things to protect the kids in our community. So I'm very appreciative of the great dollars that we received. Additional questions or comments for the city manager?
Thank you.
If not, then we will turn it over to, let's see, I'm sorry, we will turn to any items of old business, items of old business.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I, at our last meeting under old business, we spoke just briefly about the, our two drop-off locations, recycling locations, and how that contract expires this month, the twenty-eighth of this month. So I think I would like to have some, just a brief discussion on what this commission's feelings are on going forward with that, our options are pretty clear. You can continue with the two drop-off locations at a yearly cost of ninety-six thousand dollars a year. You can reduce them to one location and move three of the bins from the eliminated location to the second location, the cost of sixty thousand dollars a year. Or you can eliminate both locations at obviously a cost of zero. So, it's, it, I would just like to hear various commissioners' opinions of the direction they think we should, we should head with that and perhaps provide staff with some direction.
Comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole. We should, I, I can support either option, to keep both or reduce to, to one location. I mean, we need to continue with the, with the program. Whether it's on one location or not is just a matter of convenience, and if we go to one, we'll be able to see how well it works and make a decision, make a decision from there about what to do next. So either one or go. Whichever one we do, I think we need to do, enhance the signage there that gives better instructions about how to use it. There's no indication which one of those bins should get cardboard, which one should get plastic, what is appropriate to be put in, and in what form. For example, you're not supposed to use plastic bags. I see folks continually dumping entire plastic bags of things in the, in these, in the bins. And so, I think the, the idea here is to instruct the public and try to, try to bring this into where more and more people are doing it, and I think if we put a little more effort into that, that we can, maybe we'll induce more people to do it. A year from now, we may come up with an even better idea, but I, I can accept either one, two or three.
Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman.
I guess I would just have a couple of questions on, is it possible to, I don't think option two is a good idea, just because the sheer cost of it and knowing that we have so many issues with people dumping at those locations. So I would say probably option three or option one would be best, but can we work with our trash haulers that are in the area and help educate our community on how to recycle a little better? I know there's going to be a lot of people that would prefer to recycle, but they're not going to actually take the extra step and put everything into their car and then take it to a drop-off location. So it's just like, that's all, in someone's really busy day that has a family, a job, school, kids' activities, to put the recycling in their car and take it to a drop-off center, I think it would just be easier if we can figure out an economical way for all of our residents to be able to recycle from their home. So I don't know if Commissioner Brady had, kind of, has a suggestion on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Someone in response to that, Commissioner Lloyd, is, my thoughts on, on the drop-off locations are that up until now, we don't really know what the market penetration is for that. Are five percent of our residents using that? Are ten percent using it, or twenty percent using it? And, and I think until we have that information, I, it, it might be difficult for us to make an educated decision on whether to continue to proceed. Would this body, would this body be willing to spend a hundred thousand dollars if two percent of our residents are using it? I, I would venture to say no, but that's, that's certainly just a guess. I have asked engineering and they have, they have put in place at both locations counters to determine the use of, of both of those facilities, and I think that's a very important point that, that we, that we know before we come to a conclusion as to how many dollars we're spending. In other words, if ninety-eight percent of our residents are subsidizing the two percent of the people that are using it, I think that's somewhat unfair. And although I've, I religiously recycle and I, and I believe in recycling, everything comes at a cost, and, and I think we have, as, I think it's incumbent upon us as commissioners to make a decision based on a cost-benefit analysis, and, and I wish we had had this data available to us three or four months ago, but, but I think we will have it in thirty days, and I think in thirty days, we perhaps can make somewhat of a more enlightened, enlightened decision on that.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I had mentioned at the last meeting, I would like to consolidate to one location, Cement Ave, go out there and document then for a month. We got cameras, I thought we were going to put cameras there to get a good idea of how many folks are actually recycling and then make a determination. I've, I agree, Mr. Brady, if it's two percent of the population, then we have to, look, we have to take a hard look at that as far as the drop-off location. But I'd like, if we could get one month, I know it's what, five or six thousand for one month or by thir-, because twenty-eighth is coming up fast. And maybe give a little window to document this.
Ms. Twine, oh, I'm sorry, Trevor?
I just wanted to point out that there is a little bit of a cost savings if we go to Cement Ave, because that is closer to Republic. They give a little, I think it was a hundred dollar, a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars a month less if we went with Cement Ave over First Street. I just wanted to pick that up.
Ms. Twine.
I agree with Dave. I think going to one location and just what Trevor just mentioned, the Cement Ave, and we need some data. It's not a good idea to make decisions when we don't really have the data that we need to make a good decision, so since we're in such a short timeframe to make a decision, I think we still need to offer recycling services to our community, but gather the data that we need to make in order to see if we need to continue to do that.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Lloyd.
This is more of a, kind of a blanket statement, not specifically just for this, but I think in general, from a city staff perspective, we need to keep promoting recycling and taking care of our community, just like Commissioner Waddington said something about putting a couple extra barrels and signage up, but we're starting to see so many other businesses start to stop using plastic straws. I think Kroger just said that soon, within the next couple of years, they're going to stop using plastic bags. So is that something that, like, how far do we want to go as a community to take care of our, take care of our area? So I think we should kind of take that into consideration for everything that we're doing, even including as far as events that we host downtown or anywhere in the city. So, do we require anyone that's going to shut down a street or have a festival or have a party to also recycle as well? Because most of those products are going to be paper or plastic, so that's something that's very easy, could easily be done. When I was in, when I lived in Colorado, Frisco, Colorado, had bins that showed people and they had volunteers standing at those, what's trash, what's recycling, what goes where. So it was just, it was really nice to have that education to kind of show people and know that if you're doing it when you're outside, maybe you should do it at home, too.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Mr. Haber, I wonder if you had had an opportunity to, to look at the, the proposals. I, I recall that our engineer had shared with me that we have the luxury of proceeding on a month-to-month basis, so we're not, we're not required to commit to go, say, going to one location for the next twelve months. Is that, is that your recollection also?
We instituted an alternate bid in the pickup for the city trash hauling. I believe there is, it is submitted per month, if I'm remembering, and it's like three thousand, so I'm sure that's probably a month, not a year issue. Now, obviously, even if it was a year, we do probably have the ability to terminate it, even if it was.
If, that being the case, that would, I think that would work very well into this commission's decision. If, if their decision is to go to a one, a one location, it will still allow us to gather data, we can look at the usage and then, you know, make a decision, say thirty days from now or forty-five days from now, based on, are we willing to spend those amount of dollars for, for the amount of people that it's benefiting? I, I can, everything that I've read and, and the information that I've gleaned is that drop-off locations are, are really a Band-Aid on recycling, they are not effective. People are, you have to make it easy for people to recycle. They are unwilling usually to take recyclables and put them in their vehicle and, and drive a mile or two miles or ten miles, whatever it be, to a drop-off locations. I'm pleased that we have recycling, but I'm, but I'm concerned that it really isn't solving a problem.
And, and further on that, Aaron and I talked with Greg Stalter from Republic, he indicated that, he understood that we were talking tonight and that any agreement we came to tonight, we wouldn't be able to put until the May meeting, the first meeting in May. He was okay with working in that couple-week window, but other than that, I think they'd be a little, a little skittish not knowing where we're headed.
So I think a, a couple things. One, I think I hear a majority support for a month, a one-month extension. Just a moment, I've got a request, a motion to that effect, if that's what the, will the commission is. Second thing is, I, I think a benchmark here for purposes of our future evaluation is that if you contract presently, it would be a high to have curbside recycling, it's a surcharge of, I believe it's three dollars a month, and so I think that's a relevant figure for our, our consideration going forward. I'll just toss that out.
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I'd like to make the motion extend it one month, thirty days, get a snapshot of this and then we can take a look at it.
Motion and second, further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we went far, I'm just going to say, first, I want to say I support what Mrs. Lloyd, what, not Mrs. Lloyd, Commissioner Lloyd's comments about straws and things that we should look at in the future about what we, what we use in the city. Secondly, the, the concept of, of account, of how many people that we think use this over a month, I don't think is a, a much of a standard for making, making this decision. That's one way you could possibly look at it, but I would suggest to you that services that the community provides, other than perhaps the sewer and water and the roads, a small percentage of the community benefits from it. What percentage of people go to Lyons Park? What percentage of people use any particular service that we provide? So it's fine taking this data, it gives us information, but in terms of the, the value of the service, the number of people that, whether you suggest it might be five percent or not, it, I don't think it really makes a big, a big difference in the, in the consideration. The bins are filled continuously every week. I'd say that's a hundred percent use. So that's where I'll start the conversation when you come back with your data, but the reality is, other than the two things I mentioned, I don't imagine that we get two percent participation in much of anything, perhaps other than the fire department, which might be around twenty percent, and if we take in, in account frequent flyers, the actual number of citizens probably is down around, possibly around ten. So I'd just throw that out for, for you to think about as we move forward, forward with this. Likewise, in terms of recycling, changing this doesn't really do much. Anyone that wishes to recycle at their home now needs simply sign up and do it. So us removing these bins does not change that. So that's the other thing about this, this entire conversation, doesn't move the needle one inch further because currently we have full bins being used by citizens, and you run the risk of when those bins go away, that those individuals stop recycling, period. You have no way of measuring that whatsoever, and anyone else that's interested already does. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd, fair points, by the way, Mr. Flore. Ms. Lloyd.
That's the first part of what I was going to say. So I agree with Commissioner Poole on services, recycling compared to any other services that we offer. A question that I would have is, if we're moving it to one location, should we be documenting a little more than just counting who's there? Because are, is it really our residents that's using it, or could there potentially be businesses that are filling those bins if this is supposed to be a residential service that we're offering? So do we really know what's going in those and where it's coming from? And to Commissioner Poole's point of anybody can call and get recycling, I guess the question would be, if we don't offer, if we decide that we don't offer any bins, can we get a better price for our residents through Republic or through one of the trash haulers? Is there some type of negotiation that can be made to offer recycling to them at home at a better price?
Chief, I want to turn to you for the enforcement question. I'm going to assume a couple of things. One, it's naturally expensive to enforce this because that's a lot of your, your time available for a lot of different demands and different directions for law enforcement. I know, I think it was Officer LaSalle who was on this and issued a lot of citations as a result of this. We can't do that continuously. I'm going to assume that it's going to be easier to enforce it at a single location as opposed to two locations, I think that probably goes without saying. What I don't recall is whether, is to what extent we have the ability to monitor whether this is going beyond residential use, whether it's used by businesses and whether it's used by folks from outside of our community. The last two, I don't know that we have the ability to enforce very well, and I do know, before we got the curbside recycling, I would go down there regularly, and it was evident that it was being used by businesses, just given the sheer volume of the same kind of thing that was being dropped off there. Any thoughts? I mean, I realize you weren't prepared to answer these questions, but if you can provide some insight, or maybe just let us know, this will follow up. I appreciate that.
I think that without having somebody stationed there, whether it be a police officer or a civilian employee in collecting where they're from or having a sign-in sheet or something like that, that it's going to be near impossible to determine whether it's a business or whether or not they're Perkins Township residents or any other resident, or any other community around here. It seemed that some of the citations or a portion of them were going to people that didn't live in the city, so there's obviously, you know, that factor in there. One site would obviously be better, the cement site would be better for having a fixed camera in there, and Stu and I had talked about that a number of times, to have a camera there to document, and it's running all the time, we have all the, I guess. We have all the, I guess, infrastructure or whatever you want to say in place to monitor it better. The only option we have is to, you know, run plates, but we generally wouldn't do that unless there was a crime committed. So that would be, you know, something that wouldn't be an option other than if it was an offense of somebody purposely setting a couch there or, you know, mattress or something like that, that obviously isn't recyclable. So it's a Pandora's box to try to get all that. I don't, I don't have any real good solution for collecting it because people are just coming and going all hours of the day and night. You know, if there's a time that you drop off from, you know, eight to five or whatever, but, you know, a lot of times that doesn't go with people's work schedules and things like that. So it's not anything real simple to define.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Does this mean we are going to put cameras on this that we'll be able to review over this 30 days?
I mean, I think.
This is, yeah, are we going to? I know we could.
I've heard the chief say that was the plan.
Is it the plan?
Well, it's a little bit like telling the railroad you're going to come do an inspection. They're going to act, they're going to behave while you're there. So I don't know if we want to tell people when we're going to.
Well, between the two people in the audience and 60 people that watch us on TV, watch us on TV, I think the element of surprise has not gone away. And so, but I think it would be worthwhile, the, the information it'll give us is when this, when people are actually using it night and day, we'll be able to get an idea what the volume is at what time. And also what I spoke to earlier, without any instructions of what and where they're supposed to do it. This is a mess mostly because people are just left to their own resorts of what to do. I honestly see, would, I'd love to do this for the summer and, and have a, a part-time summer help, high school person that's environmentally involved to, to, to stay there, tell people where to put things in. We'd have a representative and attempt to educate the public on, on what is appropriate to throw away and not, and just go from there. And long-term, this, we're not going to fix this until we get the public on board with the idea of recycling. And that's not going to happen just by having one hauler that has nothing to do with motivating people to recycle. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I think Commissioner Poole made a, a good point about educating people. People may or may not do it if that's not something that they're required to do, to put in the extra work. I also think Commissioner Lloyd had a good point about, you know, individuals contacting haulers about recycling. So we may need to do a longer period of time at one location to kind of give us time to kind of think through this process. And it may, we may need to get out of the recycling business, but charge our, you know, our city haulers to do that type of thing. So it might be a better idea to, to do this one place for a little bit longer time and give us an opportunity to maybe bring our haulers in to discuss a recycling program with them, that they would do, that the individuals would pay for.
Mr. Heber, would you remind us, a couple of years ago, maybe more than a couple of years ago, I think the commission modified the ordinance such that haulers are not required to offer curbside recycling, but it's not a service that is required?
That was before my time here, but reading the Sandusky Register coverage of it, I believe that is, that's my recollection of the way I want.
I think, Mr. Waddington, you and I were here at the time.
Right, right. We, they had to at least offer.
Right.
Where they couldn't.
Okay.
That was the thing. And then there was no way we could track it at the time because there was probably, what, nine or 10 haulers at the time. This room was filled with a number.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Commissioner Twine, if, did I understand your last comments to lead us towards some hybrid form of curbside recycling by multiple haulers? I, I, I agree. I certainly agree with your, with your concept. I think that is an effective way to deal with recycling by making it easy for the resident. And if this city can find a way to drive that price down through, perhaps through volume, perhaps through sectionalizing the city and, and having multiple haulers participate in it, I think that's how you deal with recycling in the city. And I think that will be far more effective than, than two, two drop-off locations. And I, and I understand Commissioner Poole's position on not finding much value in data. The dilemma, though, is that how much value do you find in the cost of, of recycling? Because keep in mind, we've gone from zero cost in August to $96,000 in September. What will this commission's position be when we go to $200,000 next September? And as, as a variable in recycling, that can happen, as proven by the position, we've gone from zero to $96,000. So it's, it's going to come down to dollars and cents at some point in time.
So let me remind the commission, there is a motion and second. And the question is whether or not we should reduce our recycle centers to one and extend our current contract on a month-to-month basis, I guess for one month is what the motion was. So is there further comment on that particular motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'd like to propose an amendment to that, that changes, that changes it to a month-to-month basis so that we don't have to go through this again in a month. After listening to what Commissioner Twine said, it's obvious we're going to have to revisit this again. So would you consider just month-to-month basis? And obviously, you thought that also, so.
So there is a.
That's my amendment.
Yes, understood. Your second.
Second.
An amendment, second, discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, Mr. Brady.
Do you, is there a desire by this commission to add some type of ability to gauge the, the amount of use, whether that be cameras or car counters? Or is there, or is this commission's thought process that that data's not valuable?
Well, let's deal with the amendment first.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm not opposed to data. I simply said that the 5%, the interpretation of that data is not very powerful in making a decision. I didn't say we shouldn't, I'm not opposed to ga, gathering the data, it's what we do with it and what we think it means, Commissioner. Gathering the data's fine. And if you'd like to add to that amendment that we'll take, use cameras, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, that, that may, Twine, that may be a moot issue if, if we're going to consider individuals working with haulers to recycle. So if, if we are going to get out of recycling and push that off, the data may not be important. Because again, I think it's, I think it's unsustainable at, for a cost level, just as Commissioner Brady had, had spoken a few minutes ago. And so I, I support Commissioner Poole's amendment that we go month-to-month, and then I believe we should have more discussions about, you know, whether we go to individual haulers, recycling, have some type of agreement through that arena, because I don't know that, again, we can afford to continue to do this the way that we're doing it.
So the motion is to amend the motion to extend it to a month-to-month. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries and that becomes part of the amendment. Mr. Heber.
I do have a question. The, under, now we're to the point of, you know, extending the contract, are we talking about extending it for the two places, like Status Quo? Are we condensing it? And then so are we condensing it to Cement Ave?
The amendment was to amend the motion to, to reduce it to one location at Cement Ave.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Point you may or may not be aware of is that the price that we receive for the one location also included taking three bins from the location that we abandoned and adding them to the surviving location. So we, we effectively end up with 10 bins compared to seven. So it's, we haven't, we haven't gone to 50%, we've probably gone to 65%.
Additional questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is passed. Additional items of new business? I'm sorry, old business. Any items of new business? Then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone who wishes to address the question, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. And if you're, if you don't want to step up there tonight, then. Because you're the last person standing. Then would someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.